Councillors, ladies and gentlemen, the outstanding for the Mayor of the City of Clarence, councillor Brendan Lawley.
Good evening and welcome everyone. Before proceeding, I pay my respects to the Mooma Rimeena people as the traditional and original custodians of the land on which we meet, and I acknowledge the continuing connection of the Tasmanian Aboriginal people to the skies, land and waterways. I pay respect to elders past and present. Before we commence with tonight's council meeting, please let us all pause for a quiet moment of reflection and respect. Thank you, councillors, please be seated. Before proceeding, I would just like to mention of the acknowledgement of country. As some may have noticed, the acknowledgement of country presented a few moments ago was different from previous council meetings. As I said at the council meeting of the 6th of March, I've been keen to ensure the wording, practice and intent around our acknowledgement of country is appropriate. To that end, I sought advice from our RAP working group as to how we might enhance and deepen the wording of our council acknowledgement for future meetings. This evening's acknowledgement is a result of that inquiry. This is a journey of understanding we are all on, and I would like to take this opportunity to thank all members of the RAP working group, and in particular, our council representatives, our Chair, councillor Warham, and councillors Darko and Kennedy, for all their efforts. Ladies and gentlemen, good evening and welcome to the Clarence City Council meeting of Monday, the 24th of April 2023. This meeting is being broadcast live on YouTube, and what is said in this meeting is not protected by privilege, and there is a link to the agenda papers on council's website. Moving now on to item number two, apologies, councillor Weena Kennedy is an apology, other than that, we have a full house. Moving now on to item three, declarations of interest of councillors or close associates. Are there any declarations from councillors to declare? Moving on, we're now heading to omnibus items. The first item being 4.1, the confirmation of minutes. The minutes of the council meeting held on the 20th of March 2023, they've been circulated. Are there any issues arising? They're being done, we move now on to 4.2, Mayor's Communications. Colleagues, I would at this point like to acknowledge a very own Mr Ross Lovell. As you know, Ross has decided to pull up stumps here at Clarence City Council, and tonight will be his last council meeting as Clarence City Council's manager of city planning, and he hasn't stopped smiling all day. Ross's career in planning commenced around 1981. Prior to commencing employment with Clarence City Council, Ross had been the manager of strategic planning for the city of Greater Bendigo. Ross commits his employment with Clarence City Council on the 27th of October 1998, initially the role of principal statutory planner. Ross's role changed to manager of integrated assessment in 2001, and later to his current role of manager of city planning. Ross has seen many changes in the planning sphere during his career, and has made a significant contribution to town planning here in our wonderful city. Ross, on behalf of a very grateful city, thank you for your nearly 34 years of outstanding service here in Clarence, and all the very best for a happy and healthy future and the next chapter that lies ahead. Thanks, Ross. Moving now on to my diary, I table my diary for the period of the 21st of March to the 24th of April, as well as occasions that the Deputy Mayor, councillor Alison Ritchie and councillor Chong represented me. Moving on now to 4.3, council workshops, they're listed in the agenda, are there any matters arising? They're being done, we now move on to tabling of petitions. CEO, are there any petitions? Thank you, men, no, thank you. Councillor Walker?
Yes, I wish to table a petition I was presenting today in relation to the construction of the one in Lordordale for use of the community by one Gregory Brown, so if I could just pass that to the councillors?
Thank you, councillor Walker. Are there any other petitions? There being none, we now move on to 4.5, reports from outside bodies. First one being the copping refuse disposal site joint authority, councillor Walker, anything to report?
Not at this stage in the agenda.
Thank you. With regards to Tass Water, the next meeting is scheduled for the 26th of June, so I'll have more to report in some many months' time. The Greater Hobart Committee, nothing to report on that particular committee, except to say that on Wednesday, the Greater Hobart Mayors will meet for our monthly catch-up, and I may have something further to report to colleagues following that meeting. Are there any other reports from council special committee to other representative bodies? Deputy Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. I had the pleasure of tabling the Clarence Jazz Festival 2023 event report.
Thank you. Councillor Chong?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I provided the Richmond Advisory Committee meeting for the 15th of March, and also, although it's not particularly a council committee, the latest report from the Richmond Bicentennial.
Wonderful, thank you, thank you. Are there any other reports? Moving on now to 4.6, our weekly briefing reports. The weekly briefing reports of the 20th and 27th of March and the 3rd, 10th and 17th of April have been circulated to councillors. Are there any matters arising? Councillor James?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The weekly briefing report of the 17th of April, I refer to the completion of the hard waste programme on page two, and would seek a comment if appropriate from the manager of asset planning in relation to the reference to the budget and the overall programme cost 77330, 58.64 more than the originally budget. My question through you, and perhaps it may not be Mr Graham to answer this, but given that there's a 58% increase in relation to what was originally budgeted, have we made allowances for that within the current financial year, or will this be an item that will have to be included in the 23/24 financial year budget process?
Thank you, councillor James. Miss Mulder?
Once all the invoices in and we do have the final, final numbers, we will have a look within the entire programme and find savings within this year's budget.
Wonderful, thank you. Councillor James?
Thank you. In relation to the 27th of March, yes, it's included in that, I refer to the public toilet replacement at Possum Bay, and in this weekly briefing report, it refers to amongst other things that the current location of the car park at 24 Spit Farm Road is not suitable for the replacement for several reasons. Given that there is going to be a relocation of the toilet block to the play park at Possum Bay, how will that impact upon what has been regarded as a very communal sort of gathering point for many activities? And it would seem to me that the developed mill will involve some additional infrastructure which may impact upon the normal recreation and barbecue facilities in relation to that site.
Thank you, councillor James. Mr Graham, please.
Through, Mr Mayor, I'll take that one, I notice that my open space team can provide a detailed answer.
Great, thank you. Councillor James?
Finally, yes, thanks.
The proposed new youth detention facility consultation, will council be making any formal submission in relation to the proposed site, given that there is a, seems to be a groundswell of opposition in relation to this for good or otherwise reasons? So will we be, and my question perhaps through you, to the general manager slash the chief executive officer? Perhaps you could answer that question, thanks.
Thank you, councillor Graham, so through you, Mayor. The advice that we provided dated the 30th of March recommended that councillors determine if they wish to make a submission on the site for a proposed new facility. At this point in time, we haven't had feedback from councillors as to whether you wish to do that or not, but this is a first round consultation, as I understand things, across a number of sites, so there hasn't been any particular decision on location from the state at this point in time. So on one view of the world, it may be premature to do that, but equally, you may feel strongly enough that you wish to do that.
Thank you.
Thanks. Are there any other items as regards to weekly briefing reports that colleagues would like to comment or ask questions on? They're being done, I note that we're now at the end of our omnibus items, can I please have a mover of the omnibus motion? Thank you councillor Chong, second deputy mayor, all those in favour, so I move, thank you. Moving now on to item number five, public question time, there's a question on notice from Mrs Joanne Marsh of Bell Reef, as listed on the agenda.
CEO? Thank you, Mayor. We've had two questions from Mrs Marsh, the first one, I may read that, relates to recent developments and future development applications in Bell Reef, and the question is, some recent construction developments and future development applications in Bell Reef have no setback from the footpath resulting in direct impacts on the safety of pedestrians. Footpaths are damaged and access is obstructed by heavy machinery. Pedestrians may be directed to use the other footpath, putting them at further risk. This may go on for many months or years. Older people or pedestrians with a disability can be severely injured by falls. What safety precautions, such as covered boardwalks or barriers, are required by law and who is responsible for their implementation? The answer is as follows. Overall, the implementation of safety provisions such as covered boardwalks or barriers at road work sites is determined by the traffic management plan for the site. This is prepared by qualified traffic management specialists for the developer and taking into account the principles of risk management for that site. The developer or assigned builder is responsible for engaging these specialists to design and implement the traffic management plan, compliant with relevant Australian standards and Department of State Growth Traffic Control for work on roads, the Tasmanian Guide. Additionally, a permit to undertake works in or affecting a road, a highway must be obtained from the council, and the permit comes with specific requirements related to pedestrian safety and traffic control.
Thank you, the second question?
Thank you, Mayor. The second question relates to Bell Reef Beach Park, and the question was, Bell Reef Beach Park, All Abilities Playground and Beach welcomes thousands of visitors each year. Many of these visitors are babies and toddlers, and some are children with disabilities. Recently, limited changing facilities have been installed in the park, baby changing facilities and an accessible private family and care space are urgently required. Why hasn't the provision of these facilities been prioritised by the council? The answer to that question is, the council is currently undertaking a review of the Bell Reef Beach Park masterplan. A priority of this work is the acknowledgement of the public toilets, beach shower and changing facilities at Bell Reef Beach, requiring upgrade to meet community needs, expectations and to be more inclusive for all park users. Design options are being investigated for locating a new amenities building closer to the active western end of the park to better service beach, park and playground visitors. Part of the masterplan review is also undertaking a feasibility analysis of commercial opportunities for the area, and the outcomes of these studies may also inform public amenity building options. All information and design outcomes from the masterplan review process will be provided to councillors, then to seek feedback from the wider community prior to design, sorry, detailed design and funding consideration.
Thank you. Moving now on to 5.2, Neil there, 5.3, also now 5.4 questions without notice, no one here either, so moving now on to item six, deputation by members of the public, they're booing no deputations here, we can move now on to planning authority matters, item seven, there's none there either, so moving on to item number eight, reports of officers, the first one being the termination of petitions, tabled at previous council meetings, there's also none. 8.2, asset management, the adoption of council policy, inclusive play policy 2023, I'll call for a mover, thank you councillor Walker, second deputy mayor, councillor Walker.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm delighted to move this policy forward, I think certainly through my period of time on council, that council has been on a journey in this space, and it's something we can think about also in the way that houses are designed, as playgrounds are designed, that it's often very, it's often quite, if you put the forethought in in the beginning, it is so much better than having to retrofit, and I think we're moving better in this space all the time. Obviously, we have a range of regional parks and a lot of neighbourhood parks, and I guess having this focus within those parks, I think would be a really great thing. There will be some where the topography, the geography will make absolute full inclusion probably not totally viable, but I think if this focus and emphasis is put in at each and every time when we're doing it, it's a great thing. And when we think about play, we are indeed obviously thinking about the foremost at the front being children, but when you design these facilities right, and I think for its time, Bell Reef Beach stood out, the ability for other family members to participate and be part of play is made possible, and that's a really valuable thing, so it's come away, and I would seek the support of my colleagues.
Thank you councillor Walker, councillor Ritchie, deputy mayor, please.
Thank you, and I also have great pleasure to rise in support of the motion to adopt this policy. I think most of us would have spoken with many families who have a great interest in the inclusion of all abilities playground equipment across our city, and indeed, I've been contacted by people outside of our city who have a great interest in what we might be doing in our parks and playgrounds because they want to travel to the best facilities for their children, particularly those children who need access to all abilities equipment, so I also like to pay credit to history of work that's been done at council before my time, reading through the report, and as Alderman Walker's mentioned, that this has been something that we've been getting better and better at all the time. Very clearly, council started with their resolution back in November 2021, and I congratulate them for doing that at that time, and the body of work that's gone into getting this policy into shape, so it's a pleasure to support it, and we look forward to seeing better and better outcomes, thank you.
Thank you, deputy mayor, councillor Hume.
Thank you, Mayor. I mean, this isn't a contentious debate, but I felt like I had to throw my two cents in to provide a perspective as a parent of a child with disability. I have a six-year-old son who has autism, he's non-verbal, and we love going to Bell Reef Beach Play Park because he's not really interested in the usual sort of, you know, swings and climbing equipment that a lot of other kids might play on, but he loves sensory play, he loves, you know, the water play feature there, so, yeah, that's an option for him that he wouldn't otherwise have in a playground that isn't designed for all abilities with a range of different play options, so, you know, from the perspective of a parent, it's really important, of a child with disability, it's really important that we have these opportunities for them.
Thank you councillor Hume. Any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution? Right of reply, councillor Walker?
I thank those members that contributed, in particular Alderman Hume, or now councillor Hume, for sharing his perspective. I guess when we're looking at this, we tend to also focus, as has been mentioned, in the play space side of it, but I think there is a strong consensus around this table that the recreation space is part of this, so hopefully beach access will be something that we will be putting a strong focus on in the next upcoming budget. Seek everyone's support.
Thank you councillor Walker, I put the motion, all those in favour? That's unanimous, thank you. Moving now on to item 8.2.2, establishing a greenhouse gas, gas emissions reduction target for Clarence City Council, call for a mover? Thank you councillor Warren, a second up? Thank you councillor Darko, councillor Warren?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Look, it's good to see this, we had a number of conversations about how we should be addressing climate change in the last council that weren't as progressive as I would have liked them to be, so it's good that we now have this as a result of the motion that was moved by, I believe councillor Mulder, that we actually have a target. We can always do better, but at least it's a start, and hopefully we'll surpass that target, that would be my hope, that we find new and better and more efficient ways to reduce our carbon footprint, and that it just becomes part of what we do as a matter of course. Thank you, I urge colleagues to support.
Thank you councillor Warren, councillor Darko?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, just briefly echoing what councillor Warren has just said, it's lovely to see council finally taking some actual concrete action in terms of setting a target. As councillor Warren mentioned, it could definitely be higher, but this is a great first step, so I'm looking forward to seeing where we go from here.
Thank you councillor Darko, councillor Chong?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, just very briefly, while it's not part of the resolution here, I'd love to see us do some ongoing comms about what we're doing and what difference it's making, because I think that would be really useful for our community too, to see what efforts we're making and how it's making a difference.
Thank you, I know Mr Pasque is nodding in agreement down the back there, so good point, thank you councillor Chong. Councillor Mulder, do you wish to contribute to the debate?
Mayor, and so far at least, we haven't had any of the negativity that we had when I first suggested we take such an aspirational approach to the climate change. I'd also would like to point out that it's very good that we're reducing our carbon footprint, but as we've seen with recent severe weather effects, and this council has a specific role in starting to future-proof our stormwater systems, and I think that that is an approach that we need to do, because to be frank, it's already too little, too late to prevent the worst impacts, some of the impacts of climate change, and although this is a good approach to, you know, hopefully avoiding the most severe of it, the fact is that climate change and inundation are already amongst us, we're already seeing difficulties in some of our streets whereby the lack of subsurface drainage or fall is already causing potholes to appear that cannot be repaired for months on end while we wait for the water tables to fall. So this is a great element of avoiding the worst of it, but it really does need to, we really do need to step up to the plate to mitigate and future-proof our stormwater system.
Thank you councillor Mulder, councillor, oh deputy mayor, no, deputy mayor, and then councillor.
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. I wanted to just rise to support the motion, but make a contribution in, it does touch on what councillor Chong spoke about in relation to council's role, as I see it, it's probably going to be more in relation to setting culture and education, because when you look at the actual numbers cited in the report here, 2016-17, council as an organisation generated 2,200 tonnes of carbon dioxide and equivalent greenhouse gas emissions. When you look at the Clarence as a community, the amount generated was 516 million tonnes of carbon dioxide and equivalent greenhouse gas emissions, so...
So what council's operations are producing compared to the entire community obviously is very, very small. So in terms of leading the way, as setting the example, showing that we're doing our share is really, really important, but how we engage with national targets, state targets and all of those sorts of things is going to be really important moving forward. So really pleased to support the motion nevertheless, thank you.
Thank you deputy mayor, councillor Hugh.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I just rise to ask a question, I'm kind of kicking myself for not thinking to ask this at the workshop, but are we using a, some kind of certified methodology for measuring the reduction in our greenhouse gas emissions?
Thank you, Mr Graham.
Through you, Mr Mayor, I, I believe in terms of we're using national standards in terms of measuring the twenty sixteen seventeen levels and that we will do it again towards, when we're approaching towards twenty thirty, to see on the difference we're making in that time period.
Thank you councillor Hugh, any other, thank you councillor, yes, thank you councillor Hunter, thank you, my apologies, thank you councillor Hunter.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, I'm very pleased to rise to support this motion. I'm particularly interested to see the action plan come out next year, specifically in relation to FOGO, which I know a number of us have been contacted about for residents who are really keen to get that going, which is great, but also increasing carbon absorbency tree cover, the amount of trees being removed is non-stop in new developments and there are very few new trees being planted, which is concerning. So to have that enveloped into an action plan would be fantastic.
Thank you, councillor James.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. And may I acknowledge councillor Mulder's motion, which of course is on page twenty-eight of the agenda, and in that, there was extensive debate in the old council. And in particular, there was a lot of discussion in, in relation to part B, small B, identifies actions and opportunities for reducing emissions and present its findings for a future workshop for the purpose of establishing. So this is ongoing, there is that item within that particular motion which obviously presents findings and also ongoing targets for reducing emissions as arising. I would like to congratulate a prior council, twenty twenty, which has supported my motion in relation to street lighting and in fact, towards the fact of the maintenance and street lighting and becoming a significant proportion of council's operating budget and greenhouse emissions on page thirty-two of the agenda, it's well documented in that respect. The installation, and I quote, of two thousand one hundred and fifty-eight LED lamps, that's globe slash luminaries, has already delivered significant financial and environmental returns. Clarence joined with the five other councils to roll out the LED street lighting in twenty twenty. So in summary, this has been a tremendous move forward, Mr Mayor, in relation to the city. Not only have we been one of the key councils in relation to LED, but also at the same time, we have on record the way in which this council, by the very nature of having to greenhouse gas emissions savings, and I'm quoting on page thirty-two, to be four thousand and twenty-two tonnes over the operation life of the lighting, about twenty years. Not only is that, but we are also moving on solar and as it also has been documented within this agenda, that solar systems have been installed on many of the rooftops at the council, Clarence Aquatics Centre, Council Works Depot and the Linus Farne Community Activity Centre. So look, I just would like to acknowledge the fact that this particular motion was carried, I believe unanimously at that time, and that we are moving forward. And I think at the end of this, end of the day, Mr Mayor, we would be seen as one of the councils that is doing more than perhaps some of the other councils are doing in making sure that we've reached the target that has been established in this particular motion, and that is establish the greenhouse gas emissions reduction target for the organisation of forty percent of the two thousand sixteen seventeen levels by twenty thirty. And I fully support the motion.
Thank you councillor James, councillor Walker, councillor Goine, do you, councillor Walker?
Yeah, I'll make some comments. Firstly, you know, it is a target, I guess it's not binding, but we've got to, we've got to aim to, to make a difference and, and hopefully that when you go through this process, it doesn't have to be a cultural issue in any way. Efficiency is something that every organisation should be striving for and the productivity by doing less, more, consuming less energy is something that all councils should focus on. So we're going to go hard in this space, hopefully. I guess for me, the per capita component is something that I would like to see measured. I, I, I think, you know, if you're a big council with zero growth, it's much easier to look virtuous than councils that might not make quite the difference, but you know, in, in a period of substantial growth. I, I would like some clarification. From what I read in the report, my understanding is the fertilisers we are being used aren't part of the measurements that have been constructed through this process, so could I get some clarification on that?
Certainly, Mr Graham.
I have to take that one, I noticed, Mr Mayor.
Thank you.
Yeah, so in the absence of that advice, I, and from my, my previous order, my understanding is we're not, and I think that is a, a big area. And I think it dovetails in with the FOGO side of things. You know, there's, there's low-level FOGO where, you know, windrows are used and that's, that, where that's used in Tasmania, often that's involving significant distances for that green waste to be carted in diesel trucks up and back. So I am hopeful that in this really important area of wa- of waste, that in vessel FOGO is something that we will be able to deliver through our involvement with Southern Waste Solutions. And hopefully this is something that will be occurring or, or well underway, certainly before the twenty thirty time. So, yeah, I, I think, I think there's no reason for anyone not to support it. If, if you don't like some of the wordings, just think of it in the terms of efficiencies and efficiencies matter.
Thank you councillor Walker, councillor Goine.
As always, one to buck the trend, I wouldn't like to disappoint everybody and change that tonight. Whilst I agree that, you know, we do have a need to work for a better environment, I, I personally, whilst I'm not a scientist, don't necessarily like the wording. And whilst I think that, you know, it's good to have targets, working specifically towards targets without practical implementation, we can have numbers, but we really need to, like as councillor Hunter said, you know, we need to be more proactive in our actual environmental, you know, practices, particularly having more environmentally sustainable, productive permaculture, regenerative and environmental practices and a lot less use of chemicals within the council and our practices. So that would be something I'd really like to focus on.
Councillor Goine, thank you, councillor Warren, right of reply, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and I do thank colleagues for their contributions. In terms of councillor Chong comms and councillor chief cochrane education, very important, yes, not only to, to talk about what we're doing in council and how it's making a difference, but what our, our rate payers can do to make a difference as well. We need to educate on better waste management, Hobart already has a zero waste policy, we're a long way off from that. We need to educate about solar panels. I've spoken often in this place about how council can work with rate payers to provide affordable solar panels through a interest scheme through paying back through your rates, which I'd really like to see, so that we can help everybody tackle the cost of living in a practical way by reducing their power bills. I thank councillor Mulder for talking about future-proofing, there's so much more we need to be doing and stormwater has certainly been a, a huge concern as we've had some of those major events, weather events in the last five, six years that we need to address because not only do we have aging stormwater infrastructure built round about the time that Tasman Bridge went down, no coincidence, but we're now dealing with much greater and more, more frequent and more intense storm events. So we have accepted a sustainability policy in, as part of our new committee structure and a sustainability committee, and those are the sorts of things that I'm hoping that we, or intending that we should deal with through that to make sure that we are indeed future-proofing Clarence as much as we can to deal with those things that we know are an issue. So I think there's, there's a huge role there for dealing with those events as well as things that are just basically more efficient, like the LED lighting, but that's, that's a minor response in, in terms of the greater list of things that we need to do. Councillor Hunter mentioned FOGO and tree cover, very important. And again, those sorts of things that reduce what we put into landfill quite substantially and increase our tree covering, tree cover and carbon capture are things that we need to do. This is but one step on the way to having a sustainable Clarence. I can't respond to councillor Walker's comments on per capita and fertiliser, but yes, it would be good to, to know what our, our emissions are per capita. My understanding is that Clarence is one of the best municipalities in terms of solar uptake, at least it was a couple of years ago, it'd be good to see, see that again. And councillor Goine, yes, there will be an action plan, so this is, this is setting the target because...
That, that's time, thank you.
Okay, great.
Thank you councillor Warren.
Thank you.
Thank you, I'm sure that with this topic, you could go on for a lot longer than three minutes, but thank you for that right of reply. So colleagues, the, the motion before us, moved by councillor Warren, seconded by councillor Darka, is a recommendation of establishing a greenhouse gas, gas emissions reduction target, as well as considering funding a carbon reduction action plan in the twenty-three, twenty-four budget. I'll put the motion, all those in favour? Those against? Thank you, so carried. Moving now, there are no financial management items. Before we move on to eight point four governance, I would beg the indulgence of the chamber and take us back, please, to item five point two, which is answers to questions on notice. CEO.
Thank you, Mayor. I overlooked earlier a response to Mr Fig who, on the twenty-seventh of February, asked a question, there was a bit of a preamble, but the question essentially was, can the council through you, Mr Mayor, tell us, are we going to be allowed to defend our properties? And if so, will we be hung up on any regulations or any matter that may stop us defending our own properties? We've had some interaction with Mr Fig over the last few weeks and the answer I can provide in following clarification of that question is that I can advise that a person is entitled to defend their property within the requirements of the law. That means a person must comply with laws applicable to the land, including planning laws, environmental laws and such like, and should take all net reasonable steps to ensure they are complying with those laws. A person is not entitled to take actions outside of their property boundary, whether that be on privately owned land, crown land or council land, without landowner consent in the first instance. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Colleagues, we now move to eight point four governance, eight point four point one, the community support grants as a recommendation, deputy mayor, moving there, is there a seconder? Thank you councillor Chong, deputy mayor.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, I shall be very brief, it's always lovely to be able to stand up in support of community grants and in this case, community support grants. I would like to congratulate the assessment panel on the work that they've done in arriving at what are always, I know, very difficult decisions at times, some of them are fairly clear-cut when you read through the decisions and where they've arrived at and why they've landed at those. So it's just a pleasure to be able to be here to recommend them and look forward to seeing them rolled out throughout the community. Thank you.
Thank you deputy mayor, councillor Chong.
Thank you, just really great to see the range of organisations and projects that are being supported and I seek everyone's support.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this item? There's no need to write a reply then, I'll put the recommendation, that is that council approves the distribution of financial grants totaling thirteen thousand sixty-four dollars and five cents to the community groups and organisations as detailed in the report. I'll put that motion, all those in favour? That's unanimous, thank you very much. Moving now on to item eight point four point two, citizenship and awards ceremonies two thousand twenty-four and onwards, is there a mover for the recommendation? Councillor Warren, thank you, is there a seconder? Thank you councillor Darka, councillor Warren.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, I'm really pleased to bring this motion, it addresses a concern or a number of concerns that a number of us have held for quite a while, and I think it just brings us in line with community expectations to decouple our citizenship ceremony from the twenty-sixth of January, because we know that the twenty-sixth of January is not a day of celebration for a number of people in our community. So what this motion does is seeks to hold our citizenship ceremony three days either side of the twenty-sixth of January and to continue to hold our awards ceremony as we have done for the last year or so, in the middle of the year and celebrate Clarence's citizens who do marvellous work in our community at a separate time, instead of making those a, a feature of the twenty-sixth of January. So the, the last part of this seeks to take a thoughtful approach to what we might do on the twenty-sixth of January in the future. So whether there is some sort of recognition ceremony, I'm, I'm mindful that it's ANZAC Day tomorrow and sort of a day of mourning for some of our citizens or anyone who would like to have a way of expressing their emotions on that day. So we'll be looking at what other councils do, we'll be talking to our First Nations communities and, and seeking to proceed in a thoughtful and careful way as to whether there is a role for some sort of acknowledgement of the meaning of the twenty-sixth of January to First Nations people in the camps. But in the first instance, let's just have our citizenship ceremony on another day and our volunteer recognition at another time of the year. I urge colleagues' support.
Thank you councillor Warren, councillor Darka.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'll keep it brief because councillor Warren was very comprehensive there, just like to commend this motion. It's an important step towards reconciliation as outlined in the body of the motion and I'm really looking forward to seeing what we can come up with in terms of alternative ways of celebrating the day. And I'm also really pleased that we already have in place the volunteer week celebrations there, acknowledging people at a time that is arguably much more appropriate anyway.
Thank you councillor Darka, councillor James.
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor, and may I say from the outset that it's disappointing that we, even though we still have the twenty-sixth of January as a, a national public holiday, so we've got the twenty-sixth of January a public holiday and really, what is the significance of that if we are going to move as what the federal government has mandated for local government authorities to hold citizenship ceremonies? That had been held on the twenty-sixth of January, allowing it to be held three days either side of, of the, of Australia Day. And I can understand, there's been discussion and there has also been a lot of community people who have exercised their comments through the media, the written and also through the vocal side of that, that they are in favour of or maintaining the twenty-sixth as Australia Day and for good reasons for, from that side of the argument. So look, it, there seems to be a little bit of a vacuum here in my opinion, because A, the twenty-sixth of January is still a national holiday, public holiday, and therefore on that day, if this council, as some of the others have already flagged that they will be holding their citizenship ceremonies on either side of, of the twenty-sixth of January, then it just seems to me to be a, something that becomes irrelevant. But at the same time, what do people do on the twenty-sixth of January? Do they still have a Barbie? Do they still sort of break from work and, and... Do they still sort of break from work and, and decide to have a, a day off as part of the national holiday system and so forth? The other point I'd like to make is in relation to what the federal government have mandated for local government authorities that have held on the twenty-sixth in the past and now on either side of that date. As to whether or not it's up to local, uh, authorities, government authorities to continue with their, uh, celebrations or, as, as we call it, citizenship ceremonies on that day. And I'm unsure as to whether or not there is this, um, requirement or it's been legislated or whether it's by the strike of a pen through the regulation system that makes it necessary to be able to be, uh, mandated. But it seems to me that there may be some councils throughout the country, depending on, on their regional perspective or in turn where they may be based accordingly, to continue to have their ceremonies on that particular date, Foundation Day or when the White Settlement obviously came ashore. And therefore we sort of celebrate it as part of our national, um, assemblies and ceremonies on that day. So look, I won't be supporting this. I think there's still, uh, an opportunity for others to, um, to make comment. I'm a great believer in, uh, supporting the yes voice as part of a change to the constitution. I think that is really important. But at the same time, I believe there's something that has been a national holiday and it still is regarded as that. It's a public holiday throughout the country on the twenty-sixth of January. And by the very nature of, there is some, uh, wriggle room, as I'd call it, as far as other councils throughout the country may decide to continue. And if that's the case, then I believe it ought to stay and therefore I would not be supporting this motion.
Thank you councillor James. Before we continue, just to clarify a point, uh, that is that, um, what the federal government did in December last year was lift the mandate the previous government had in place that citizenship ceremonies had to be held on the twenty-sixth of January.
Hmm.
That councils can still choose, but what the government's now saying is three days either side. So, uh, if you like, um, it's not, you don't have to hold it on the twenty-sixth and that's, that's the motion before us, uh, this evening. Just a point of clarity there. Thank you. Councillor Hunter, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Um, thank you councillor James for your contribution. However, I just want to clarify, as the mayor has done to some point, that this isn't about changing the public holiday. It's just really about not holding a citizenship ceremony on that day, which we hold plenty of other citizenship, citizenship ceremonies throughout the year on days outside of that day. And when I became a citizen five years ago, it had no relevance to me of whether that day was held on Australia Day or any other day of the year. I just wanted to be a citizen. And I suspect that many other new citizens will feel similarly. So I will be supporting this motion.
Thank you councillor Hunter. Councillor Hoo, and then councillor Goine.
Um, yes, I, I just want to point out, Mr Mayor, that, um, councillor James sort of asked the question, well, what are we, what are we going to do on Australia Day? Um, the, the point that's been made by councillor Warren in moving this motion is, is that, um, for most people, twenty-sixth of January is not a day of celebration. It's a, it's a day of mourning. Um, it should be a day of mourning for all of us if we, if we pay due respect to First Nations people and, and what they've, uh, suffered throughout history as a result of, you know, occupation by Europeans. But, but also twenty-sixth of January, even though it has been recognised as, um, Australia Day, you know, by the federal government, doesn't actually really have any relevance to the founding of Australia. If you consider all the milestones, uh, that involved, you know, the, the Federation of Australia and the establishment of our constitution and parliament, um, it's actually unrelated to any of those. It's, it's, it's a date that's, um, you know, set, well, the, the significance of it was something that occurred over a hundred years before Australia even existed as a nation. But in answer to the question, what do we do on Australia Day? Well, tomorrow, we've got ANZAC Day and that's not a day for celebration either. It's a day of commemoration. What do we do on ANZAC Day? We, we commemorate. We pay homage to, um, people who have ended up sacrificing their lives. And maybe Australia Day as well because of the experience of our First Nations people. Um, you know, the, the, the genocide, the disease, the, um, the disadvantage that they continue to suffer today. Uh, is, is something that we can use that day to commemorate rather than celebrate. It shouldn't be a cause for celebration and that's why, um, I believe we should support this motion and choose not to hold celebratory functions on that day. And that, and that's what we're essentially doing with this motion.
Thank you. Councillor Goine.
I would just like to add, as always, a practical component, but, um, I am in support of this motion simply for the fact that we will be saving costs on not having staff working on a public holiday. Um, and reiterate the point that I'm slightly concerned about the wording that we hold no community events. Um, because I obviously in the future see that it could be a day of commemoration, just like ANZAC Day. Um, yes, but I will be supporting it based on the simple practicalities of the costs related to it. And as councillor Hunter said, you know, I think when you become a citizen, as I've seen, it's probably been my greatest pleasure on councillors, the citizenship ceremonies, um, and the pride that they have in those. And I honestly don't think they would care how and where we celebrate them. So, but I, I am definitely in support of perhaps having, um, something to commemorate, a community event to commemorate the importance of Australia Day.
Thank you councillor Goine. Councillor Maudes, I think councillor Walker.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Becoming an Australian citizen is a cause for celebration. As was, uh, as, as it was when I, at a tender age, became an Australian citizenship at a ceremony at the CWA at the Smith, in, in Smithon, but I don't remember whether that was Australia Day or not. Um, however, January the twenty-sixth is not Australia Day. It is, it is the day the British Crown laid claim to the mainland of Australia under the now horribly discredited notion that the land was vacant because no one was farming it or allegedly no one was farming it or building stuff on it. January the twenty-sixth is actually New South Wales Foundation Day for that reason. That was the day the colony of New South Wales was founded. The true date for an Australia Day celebration is March the third. That is the date in nineteen eighty-six that by an act of the Australian Parliament and all the other acts relating to Australia were acts of the Westminster Parliament. That was the day the Act of an Australian Parliament severed the rights of the Westminster Parliament to make laws for the colonies and abolished appeals to the civil council. You are not an independent nation that, that claims to be the rule of law if another nation can make those laws and be the final court of appeal for those laws. Until that date in nineteen eighty-six, we were at best a semi-autonomous agency of the British Crown and that, um, you know, ultimately our laws were determined by that parliament. I suggest that removal of the celebratory nation of Australia Day, of January twenty-sixth, is a first step to celebrating the day on which we became truly independent and got our freedom because we administered our own laws. So maybe it shouldn't be Australia Day. Maybe it should be Independence Day. I wholeheartedly support this motion.
Thank you councillor Maudes. Councillor Walker.
Uh, thank you, Mr Mayor. Look, it's interesting. As a, as a Gen Xer, we grew up with Australia Day weekend. Three days and with that, not necessarily a whole lot of emphasis placed on the twenty-sixth. It was a weekend and, uh, the Keating Labor Government even shrouded that would be celebrated on, in nineteen ninety-four. And, and I think that that, that sort of really upped the ante. Um, I struggle a little bit with this in regards that, um, it's not a matter that I gave much thought to in my youth, but, um, just by sheer happenstance, attending the centenary of Federation, um, after a not insignificant night in, uh, Sydney on December thirty-one, two thousand. Uh, the happenstance of going to, to that event and just reflecting on the sheer miracle that is Federation, that a bunch of ragtag colonies got their act together, put aside self-interest enough to actually form a nation, I think is a miracle and I think it is something worth celebrating. I don't, I don't in any way celebrate the twenty-sixth. It's not, not a date that resonates with me as Australia Day. However, here's the problem. The majority of Australians in most surveys at this stage still want the twenty-sixth to be the day that it is celebrated. And I don't believe it's the right day. But my worry potentially with motions like this is we're not actually putting in the work to bring people along with us. We're not necessarily putting in the work to persuade people. We're saying, we've made the decision, it's done. Like it or lump it, that's how we're going to go about things. And I think if we do put, if we do put work in, if we do talk about, um, why it isn't the, you know, why it is a deeply traumatic and problematic day for significant numbers of Australians. If we do talk about the actual nature's history, then I think there will be a warm-heartedness and willingness for most people to come along the journey with us. But I don't think we're putting in that work and, and the no community events is just something we're, we're doing now and we, we, we'll come as a surprise to a lot of, lot in the community. It will come as a big surprise. And again, um, you know, that, that might, might harden feelings in an unnecessary fashion. Uh, I know that, that Australia Day or January the twenty-sixth, for a long time, has been the day that most citizenships, um, uh, are taken out in Australia. And I, I don't think it's necessarily, and I think that the reason that has been, has been the word Australia Day, not necessarily anything to do with the twenty-sixth. Um, and, and again, part of, part of a sales pitch would also be the involvement of, of groups like the Multicultural Council of Tasmania, I'm sure, um, would be, uh, not necessarily, uh, big fans of the twenty-sixth, but having a variety of groups coming together, uh, I think would be really useful to help, um, not just change the date, but to change hearts and minds in a, in a, in a really, in a really effective and open-hearted way. And I think the focus on this, rather than just saying that game over, is to, is to, is to focus on, on what is the best date to celebrate. Because by, by using the words no community events, you can't say, I want to engage in a dialogue about, about our countries, um, where it's coming to and where it's being. I want to engage in dialogue. But any view you might have, um, you need to possibly put it to the side because we've already decided that that day isn't going to be involved. I think it is a difficult, uh, conversation and it's going to take a lot of work for some people to bring people along. But I'd like to hope that we can do it in, in, in the widest possible fashion. And that's what concerns me with the way that this has been brought together. We haven't actually done that open thing with the community. We haven't said, this is something we're wanting to change and this is why we want to change it. What we're saying is, no, it's changed and here's why, rather than we want to and doing it forward. So I'm in this difficult position of being entirely a hundred percent behind the sentiment and the rationale, but, um, the process is the problem. And so, uh, my conundrum is, is, do I support something or, or do I? Uh, I'm not, certainly not going to vote against it, but should I be abstaining when, um, this, I think, has some problematic elements that I think haven't been given enough, um, due consideration? So that's the, that's the position I place myself in.
Thank you councillor Walker. Councillor Chong.
Um, two things. Firstly, as noted in the report, um, the event special committee has been for some time very supportive of this change. And as the previous chair, the, the members of that committee have been very positive about the fact that we should not be celebrating on the twenty-sixth of January and we need to find some way around. And this motion will certainly take effect to the, to the thoughts and desires that they had. The other thing I guess is that, is what do you do on Australia Day? And can I say, I'm in the middle of some renovations at home at the moment. I have a lot of tradies coming and going. They almost all, without exception, worked on Australia Day because then they could have a long weekend. And I think that's probably what we're going to end up with in the same way that we used to, where we had Australia Day was a long week, the last Monday in, in January. I suspect the reality of life is that's what's going to happen.
Thank you councillor Chong. Deputy Mayor, councillor Ritchie.
Thank you, uh, Mr Mayor. Um, I think, looking forward in reality, we're probably just, um, in a holding space until we stave off the inevitable, in my view. Um, I don't think Australia Day has a future staying on the date that it currently sits at. Um, and, um, it's a pity that we're sort of caught in the middle at the present time that we haven't been able to get to, uh, that discussion as a nation, um, quite yet. And hopefully we do. I think it's one that we need to have. Um, but obviously that's not something we can deal with, um, at council level. We need to respond as we are to, uh, what the federal government has, uh, uh, is enabling us to do and the decision we want to make about how we respond to that. Um, I would point out to colleagues that, uh, section A of the motion does say subject to section D, which, holding no community events or citizenship ceremonies. But then requests, um, that the, um, the RAP Working Group conduct further desktop research, uh, to present options at a future council workshop on how council may recognise and pay respect to Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander peoples on the twenty-sixth, um, while it continues to be a national holiday. And I would just, the only comment I'd make in relation to that and the clarity that I would seek is that in attachment two of the paperwork, um, in, uh, and, and uh, councillor Chong's quite, uh, correct in saying that the, um, special events committee, um, was supportive, um, uh, unanimously, as I recall, um, in the most, in response to the most recent, uh, correspondence we received from the RAP committee. But the point, uh, the recommendation put forward to our committee, uh, point three of that does actually say that, um, uh, the RAPWG will undertake further desktop research on what other councils in Australia are doing on the twenty-sixth of January public holiday to present options at a future workshop. So we haven't actually quite captured that in section D of the motion. And I actually, we, we appear to just be suggesting that we'll only put forward, uh, solutions in respect of paying respect to Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islanders. Whereas I would have actually thought that what was put forward in the original recommendation is a bit broader than that. And so I would, um, hopefully, if that was the intention of the original recommendation, respectfully ask that that be included because it doesn't restrict the committee then to looking at what is happening not just in respect of the Indigenous community on that day, but everybody.
Thank you, uh, councillor Ritchie. Um, councillor Warren, right of reply, please.
Thank you. I'm sorry, uh, councillor Ritchie, I thought that was captured in part D, that we were going to do that research and.
No, it's not, not question, answer time. It's for a reply.
So, yeah, I'm sorry if I missed that. Look, um, I'd like to thank my colleagues for their, um, considered and respectful contributions. It's, I'm actually really proud to be in the chamber, um, this term of council where we can have such a mature debate. Um, look, I, I want to just reiterate that all we're talking about here is moving the citizenship ceremony, which is held a number of times at other times throughout the year, and the volunteer recognition, which is already held at a different time of the year. This is not a discussion about whether we should have a national holiday celebrating Australia on the twenty-sixth of January. Twenty-sixth of January is an arbitrary date, as councillor Walker pointed out. It, it's only been that long since nineteen ninety-four. Um, so it's, it's really a relatively recent choice to have it on that particular date. Um, but that was an unfortunate choice because it's not a date that all Australians can celebrate equally. But that's not the point of this motion. Um, we're not making those decisions, as has been pointed out. That's not within our remit. We, we can't make those decisions. What we can choose to do is have our citizenship ceremony on a different day because to my knowledge, there was no citizenship ceremony held on the twenty-sixth of January on Invasion Day. So it's, there's no precedent for that. It's, it's something that has happened maybe for the last, um, uh, thirty years or so, but not before that. Um, so we can hold our, um, citizenship on a different day and in fact, we already do that. We can hold our volunteer awards on a different day. We already do that. As to there being no community events on this particular day, I don't think we're going to get slammed for that. There haven't been any community events for three years because of COVID. And I don't know that there's anybody on the hotline each year saying, where's our barbecue? Where's our free snag down at the boardwalk? So I, I think that that timing has actually worked in our favour, that we haven't done it for three years. Let's just put it on the side. Let's just put it on the side and not continue to do it until we work out a more inclusive way of celebrating our nationhood. And that's not what this motion is about. So if anyone has concerns about that, that is a separate discussion. This is a discussion about citizenship and, um, volunteer awards and working towards maybe, and, and this actually came out of a, I believe, a question from a staff member, that they would like to see something that they can attend as a commemorative sort of event on the twenty-sixth of January. So I do urge colleagues to review the motion in that light and support it. Um, thank you for your time and contributions.
Thank you councillor Warren, thank you colleagues. Uh, I'll put the, uh, the motion, which is the recommendation, all those in favour. Those against? And abstaining councillor Walker? Thank you. Right, so Carrie, moving now on to, um, eight point four point three, the Copping Refuse Disposal Site Joint Authority approval of rule changes. Councillor Walker, you're moving this one?
So mis, so moved as listening.
Thank you, seconded by councillor Chong. councillor Walker?
Uh, no, this is, uh, part of housekeeping, um, and, uh, there's nothing overly substantive, but, uh, need to keep things contemporaneous and that's what these mild changes are achieved.
Thank you councillor Chong. Great, thank you. Any other colleagues wishing to make councillor, uh, Mulder, please?
I did not to, but, um, given contributions to the previous thing, I'm, I'm afraid that I can't agree with one hundred and ten percent of this. So therefore I think I must abstain in that we couldn't have, possibly have a compromise solution that we could express support for. Not, I will disapprove of that.
Right, thank you councillor Mulder. Any other colleagues wishing to contribute? Well, I think I'll put the recommendation, that is that Clarence City Council approves the certified amended rules of the Copping Refuse Disposal Site Joint Authority. All those in favour? That's unanimous, thank you colleagues. Moving now on to eight point four point four, Southern Tasmanian Regional Land Use Strategy, draft amendment to the Regional Settlement and Residential Development Strategy, council response. Seek a mover of this motion, please. Thank you councillor Mulder, a seconder? Thank you deputy mayor, councillor Mulder.
Thank you, mister mayor, and I'll make reference to a motion that no doubt councillor Hume, um, was going to put, but will only do so, I suspect, if this does a thing. I do not resile or support any suggestion that we, as a council, should resile from our decision not to approve an extension of the urban growth boundary. But to suggest, as the minister did, that I'm a dinosaur and bloody-minded for opposing this flies in the face of some facts. In twenty nineteen, I successfully moved in this council a motion to actually completely remove the concept of the urban growth boundary and instead rely on zones to control development. These are because the urban growth boundary was an impediment to growth. It encouraged, by encouraging land banking and therefore the supply of land. I still, I still do not, I still, I still do not support the rezoning of land above the seventy metre level. I also, despite community opposition, uh, supported the removal of the urban growth boundary for Richardson's Road at Sanford. Um, and that was despite a lot of community opposition, so it's not like I'm being populist on this issue. Pass Road was another one that I strongly supported and East Riston. All was supported by a majority on the council and on which the minister, but, and, but it's not us that were the dinosaurs. The minister has been sitting on those for up to three years and calls us bloody-minded for, for, for enforcing the scheme. It is not council who are bloody-minded and dinosauric on this issue. What I oppose is the rezoning of land above the seventy metre contour line because it is unnecessary and just a land grab. Let's be clear, this council is not anti-development. Seventeen hundred houses could have been under construction today if the developer had accepted the council's structure plan, um, and, uh, but instead he had a desire to maximise his lot to you. And I note the letter to the minister, I note the letter to the minister, but I highlight that he is on the public record as saying that he would move and in fact remove the, uh, uh, the urban growth boundary at this point irrespective of consultation. That says a lot about government and consultation.
Thank you councillor Mulder. Deputy mayor, councillor Ritchie, please.
Thank you, mister mayor. I don't particularly have, um, a lot of additional commentary to add. Um, councillor Mulder has spoken quite widely. Um, naturally I endorse the council response as we all, um, had our role in making contribution to what council decided to put forward. Um, I thank the officers for putting that all together, um, uh, the collection of the input that, that was provided. Um, and I think the only other observation I would make, um, in relation to planning is that it is disturbing, uh, to see, and I, and I think it's fraught with danger, a planning system where you see, uh, any minister appearing to have too many levers to pull that involve them in individual planning decisions across any municipality. I think that's something that needs to be rethought very seriously from a planning perspective. Um, I have a view that there are quite a few things in the planning system that, um, need to be reviewed or restored. But, um, that's a conversation for another day. And, um, I urge colleagues to, uh, support the motion to, uh, note, note and endorse the correspondence.
Thank you councillor Ritchie. councillor Hume?
Um, mister mayor, I'd like to move the amendment that circulated as an amendment to the substantive motion.
Uh, is it, uh, acceptable to the mover? Oh, I'm sorry councillor.
Don't, isn't, sorry, point of order, mister mayor, isn't the, don't you seek a seconder if an amendment's moved? So if they, if it's not acceptable to the mover, you then seek a seconder?
Okay, we'll go, we'll go through that then, is there a seconder?
Just a point of order, I think, mister mayor, it has to be acceptable to both the mover and the seconder.
It does.
Therefore, not being acceptable to the mover, the deputy's position.
So it's not down. So, so the, so the amendment then, but if, if you give a seconder to the amendment, it can be then debated and voted on as an amendment to the motion if it's not acceptable to the mover and so on.
I don't believe that. I'll take some advice on that one moment, please.
It's my understanding of the process.
It is as, uh, um, I thought it was and as councillor Mulder also, um, i- indicated as well. If you wish to move an amendment to the motion, it has to be acceptable to the mover and the seconder. The mover's already indicated it's not acceptable, so it cannot be then considered as an amendment to the motion. What you can do, of course, is foreshadow that if this is unsuccessful, this motion for us now, you can foreshadow your motion with the amendment.
Okay. All right, well, that, that wasn't, that wasn't my understanding of standing orders, but I'll.
Pardon me, excuse me, uh, councillor Mulder.
Just another point of order, I, I think that, um, that, that it is actually a two-step process. One is you seek the leave of the mover and the second, and if they are not agree, if either is not agreeable, then what happens is that a procedural motion can be moved to amend the motion and then it goes to the floor.
Thank you councillor, I'll take, I'll take advice again.
And I'm fairly sure that's what your predecessor has done.
Thank you. By the way, I don't leave my rules am I for straw? Thank you, uh, thank you, thank you, um, Miss Ellis. But, uh, uh, as I understand the advice, um, you seem to be correct. So the movers, uh, not accepted the amendment. What you can then do, of course, is seek a move a procedural motion, that, that your amendment, your part B, um, be attached to the recommendation. That will need a procedural motion, it's just put straight away, there's no debate on it. And then, of course, if that's unsuccessful, not that I want to preempt the outcome here, you can then foreshadow in your contribution that you'll move, you'll seek to move if this motion before us now is unsuccessful. So do you wish to seek the procedural motion, councillor Hume?
Uh, no, I'll just, I'll foreshadow the amendment.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll reset the clock, those four were yours.
Thank you, mister mayor. Uh, look, I, I cannot, and, and the reason I've put, put an amendment is I believe that if, if you're going to, um, and, and I cannot in good conscience, um, support, uh, the, the recommendation, um, because I, I strongly support the, the Skylands Master Plan. Um, and I believe that, that council should take a position of supporting it too. And I always believe that, you know, if you're going to put an alternative view to what, what's being put, that, you know, it, it's fair that you also put your money where your mouth is and back that up with a, with, with a, an alternate motion or, or an amendment. Um, so what I believe we should be doing is writing to the minister and, you know, the, the advice that, the submission to this process is already gone, uh, but write to the minister and tell him that our position has changed. Uh, and, and the, basically, when we debated the Skylands Master Plan and, and, and the urban growth boundary amendment, and came to our decision on that, um, there were a number of reasons that council gave for not supporting it. And there, there were all around sort of the Greater Hobart Plan and the, and the overall Greater Hobart, you know, strategic approach to, um, considering urban growth boundary amendments in terms of, um, saying, you know, um, we encourage infill development and, uh, you know, all councillors should be consulted and, um, but when it comes to the, those, those strategic reasons, first of all, um, we need to recognise that, um, the Greater Hobart Plan also talks about, uh, looking at areas for potential greenfields development as well as encouraging infill. And also specifically mentions Drudie Point as an area of potential greenfields development. But those, those greater strategic reasons, the, the reasons for that are, uh, to look at, you know, what's needed to meet um, housing supply and housing demand, uh, and also, you know, looking at the broader impacts like, like traffic, et cetera. Now, the thing is, the number of developments, uh, the number of dwellings that the Skylands Master Plan was proposing compared to the number of dwellings that are potentially, uh, possible within the existing urban growth boundary, uh, is a fairly small number. It's, it's marginal at best. And especially marginal if you consider that the Skylands Master Plan was going to be implemented over a timeframe of twenty-five years. The strategic justification for the Skylands Master Plan is really about local conditions. Like, it's not, it's not about the overall need for, um, housing supply. It's about whether you can implement the principles of new urbanism and come up with a development that is more livable than what would be possible within the existing urban growth boundary. And mind you, the existing urban growth boundary is quite arbitrary because it was set at the seventy metre contour because it was about, uh, water reticulation. That, that was the reason for setting the seventy metre contour. Now, I, I don't agree with the approach proposed by the minister, uh, that you remove the urban growth boundary entirely because I do still believe that the skyline should be maintained. But, but the problem I see is if, if the status quo remains, the, and the area does get developed, which it, you know, um, ultimately will be, that you will end up with a development that is less livable and more traffic dependent than what was proposed by the Skylands Master Plan. Uh, and that's why I can't, I can't support the position that we've, we've already communicated and that we're going to endorse with this, uh, resolution. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hume. councillor James?
Uh, thank you, mister mayor. I, I don't, I'm not sure why we're having this debate because on the sixth of March, the decision was nine-three that council does not. And that is what is in this, uh, particular motion that's before the chair as far as, uh, responding to, uh, Minister Ferguson. And it was quite clear on the sixth of, of, of March twenty twenty-three that council supports the amendments to Strills Regional with the following suggested additional tests. And that's fine, that's all part of the process. Council also supports the proposed amendment to the urban growth boundary at East Derwent Highway Riston. And that's been on the boil for a number of years in relation to that. But council does not support proposed amendment to the urban growth boundary at Ropley Hills, Trammy at Drudie Point. Note the following. And the council has refused to support the Skylands Master Plan as a reason for amending, et cetera. And council will continue to work with landowners and residents in the area to develop an acceptable master plan. So now we have a motion or, uh, uh, obviously if the motion that's before the chair is rejected, and that's contrary, I believe, to what we decide on the sixth of March, nine-three. And by, by taking this on board, and hopefully it doesn't get up because it's going to basically put us in an awkward situation where the community at large were obviously behind, you know, changes to the urban growth boundary and particularly in relation to the Skylands. Not that they rejected it outright, and that's part of the motion that was put forward by, uh, councillor Hunter. It left the door open for further discussion on the master plan, which is quite appropriate. But now to try to bring forward this, and okay, you have every right to put, bring it forward, but at the same time, it is contrary to what decision we made on the sixth of March. And if that ever got up after the amount of work this council put in and also the community's concerns on how they, uh, brought forward their concerns in relation to it, then I think it would be absolute sham. So I will be supporting the recommendation as was circulated to us some time ago. And we all had the opportunity to make comments in relation to it. And therefore, the recommendations before the chair, which has been very well put by the officers in relation to this matter, I support it and I believe it, it ought to be carried by a majority of councillors in this place because it's only supporting and endorsing our decision of the sixth of March.
councillor James, thank you. Before I call in on the speaker, just a point of clarification, particularly for, um, for those residents at home. Um, we, between council meetings, received a letter from the minister for planning, the honourable Michael Ferguson, seeking comment on a draft amendment to the Regional Settlement and Residential Development Strategy and other matters relating to the Southern Tasmanian Regional Land Use Strategy. The deadline of receipt for submissions was the fourteenth of April, which of course, between our council meetings. So, um, given that, that date and the, and the timeframe, um, a draft response was prepared by the CEO, uh, mister Lovell and other members of the, of the executive team here, senior leadership team. It was circulated to councillors, councillors were given an opportunity. And I, from memory, I believe all of us, um, participated, uh, very openly in that process. Um, and a letter was settled by the CEO. Um, what we're seeking tonight, of course, is council's formal endorsement, um, post fact, if you like, or ratification that we agree with that letter being sent. Um, the, um, the proposed amendment that councillor Hume referred to is not before the chair at the moment. He did foreshadow, however, that if this was unsuccessful, that, that he'd be then seeking to put both A and B of his, his amendment. But that's not before us at the moment. It is just seeking ratification of the letter that was, that was sent by the CEO to the minister for planning on the twelfth of April. So I hope for the benefit of everyone at home that clarifies the, the position. Uh, calling for other speakers, please, colleagues, anyone else wishing to make a contribution? councillor Walker, thank you.
Yeah, look, um, I would have enthusiastically, uh, backed Alderman Hume's amendment. And, uh, were I to have the Orwellian oration skills to sway, persuade, uh, four people, five people to come along, uh, with this tonight, well then, uh, I, I would look forward to seconding his foreshadowed motion. Probably won't get up. Um, so, uh, you know, some could say it's an exercise in futility, but, um, you know, if you believe something to be right, um, then you should stand up with it. You should go down, uh, swinging on something that matters. And I think that the new urbanism concept matters. I think, uh, not, not, uh, you know, not trying to say the right things that will end up with the right, with, that'll end up with the wrong outcomes is a way for. Uh, I did, I did, uh, did quote the Los Angeles's Hittis, uh, book last time and I really fear that's what this beautiful site will end up with. So even if, um, what we're trying to do isn't effective, it is something worth trying to do. Uh, it's not the most, it's not the most pragmatic way forward. It's certainly not the most, uh, popular way with those that are, if you like, more engaged or invested. But I think, um, you've got to be able to look back, uh, and, and be, be comfortable with the decisions that you make around the table. And, uh, I was comfortable with that decision, uh, or I wasn't comfortable with the decision. was comfortable with my position. And, you know, decisions have consequences and and I suspect, not that it's, not that, you know, should be the be all and end all, but, you know, removing planning from councils is now a really live issue, so much so that it's been separated to not to not distract from the the other reform process underway. You know, I'm, yeah, I wouldn't want to try and live as a clairvoyant. I don't think I'd be very good at it, but we're in the betting stakes. I'm saying planning's now going to be removed from councils, and I think a lot of surrounding councils will look to us to see how we might have raised attention to why governments might wish to do that.
Thank you, councillor Walker. There being no further speakers, so councillor Mulder, write a reply, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I share the concern stated that we have a minister here interfering in the planning policies and processes on a case by case basis. It's also a fact that, and I'll reiterate, that the urban growth boundary is unnecessary because zoning is the most appropriate means of controlling urban growth and the use of land. That has always been the case. So irrespective of a structure plan and an urban and the or an urban growth boundary, council will still need to approve the rezoning above the 70 metre level and or will that too be called in as the minister interferes in planning on case by case basis. In regards to traffic, by what manner of logic can you suggest that 2,500 drillings will produce less traffic than 1,700, especially when the Skylands proposal has no schools, no supermarkets, no medical facilities, and certainly no employment creating area like an industrial like industrial estate? So, you know, in terms of Orwellian oration skills, I understood that Big Brother simply said what was what and you didn't have to do any persuading, so I'm not sure where that goes. And and I and I do note that it was hinted at, but it was actually spilled out the last time, that if we continue on this path of actually standing up to a minister, that somehow or other we're going to end up in administration, we'll bring it on.
Thank you, councillor Mulder. Before I put the motion, I'll just mention that this is unsuccessful, the councillor Hume has foreshadowed his alternative. I'll put the motion, which is the recommendation, all those in favour. And those against? Thank you, so carried. Moving now on to item 8.4.5, review of council special committees. Call for a mover of the recommendation, please. Deputy Mayor, thank you. Is there a seconder? Thank you, councillor Darko. Deputy Mayor?
Yes, just very briefly. Congratulations and thank you very much to the council staff for all the hard work that has gone in to preparing this proposal before committee, the council this evening. Coming in as a relatively new councillor and being the the chair of the Special Events Committee, it became quite apparent to me that there were good reasons for undertaking the structural change, right down to things like templates for minutes, templates for constitutions, all of those things seemed certainly very, very much overdue and a timely reform to make to the committee structure. It makes sense to me that this is about trying to ensure that we get as much synergies as we can across the working groups that we might not currently be seeing under our current structure. And I think it's important to note that, as we, as we mentioned in the workshops, this is not about reducing the amount of committee work that's done or even necessarily the number of working groups. I think it's more about trying to arrange things in a way that they actually work. So in a way that the right hand knows what the left hand's doing in a much better way in terms of the overarching committee structure. So I am very happy to support the motion and would seek the support of colleagues.
Thank you, councillor Ritchie. Councillor Darko, please.
Yeah, I would like to commend council officers on the work that has gone into this review. It's extremely promising. I particularly commend them on moving towards an area that is more disciplinary area based as opposed to individual silos. So the hope is that we can have the working groups and the committees moving forward in a holistic manner as opposed to being individual little boxes. And my hope is that we see a lot more productive and well thought out outcomes as a result.
Thank you, councillor Darko. Councillor Hume, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I think the other the other thing that needs to be noted with the new committee structure is that if you were designing a set of committees for this council, you wouldn't go with what we have presently. It seems to have, you know, come along in an ad hoc way over time. And and one of the things the new committee structure achieves is it actually covers portfolio areas that weren't previously recognised by the previous committee structure. So, you know, it was important that we have coverage of areas like tracks and trails and, you know, like bicycle infrastructure and so on. But there were a whole lot of whole lot of areas of council business that that didn't have any committee oversight. And so it's appropriate that we we broaden the purview of committees to cover the whole operations of council. Now, I I haven't had a whole lot of concerns. I've had one person raise concerns to me about this new structure and they were worried about the future of the Tracks and Trails Committee. Tracks and Trails is certainly something that our city has to be be proud of and that we can showcase to, you know, the the rest of Greater Hobart or even Tasmania. But having said that, you know, I still believe that with the new working group format, that that it will still, you know, get appropriate attention. I I really like the fact that we're actually broadening the the policy coverage and the portfolio coverage of our our committees to areas that may not have had any attention or oversight previously.
Thank you, councillor Hume. Councillor James?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I think we've always been of the view that we've had too many committees and there hasn't been the function that really identifies some of these areas that if you're looking at on the on a strategic purpose and basis. But having said that, I've I've said at the workshop and I'll repeat it in this place again, that it is a shame to see Tracks and Trails and the Cycling Committee disbanding council's Bicycle Advisory Committee. And obviously, it's reforming that as Tracks and Trails in under a standing working group. And of course, the five new super duper committees are Active Living Advisory, Community Wellbeing, Cultural Creative, City Development, Sustainability Advisory. Now, they are a lot of words and under those, there are certain working groups that will be designated to each of those particular advisory committees. I I agree with, and I have been a member of the Howra Community Centre since in the last term of the of the previous council, and I know exactly how the workings of that and how much the the committee wanted to be able to sort of handle the sort of day to day, but not the financial sort of side of it as part of the trading operations of that key centre. And it's it's definitely the flagship as a community centre within this municipality area. It is huge and it's gaining more momentum from the early days when we bought the Sunshine Home, as was known back in 86, I think, anyway, back then when Warden Sprow basically headed up that and pushed it for us to purchase the Sunshine Home. And of course, from there on to this day, it is the community centre. And it's great that it's got all those beautiful activities, bowls club, et cetera, tennis clubs, et cetera, and so on. So, look, I I agree with part C, no doubt about it, and I know that's what the committee wanted. Also, D, Lindisfarne Community Activity Centre, back in the early days, Alanay Church, Michael Redet and myself were party to establishing or obviously council taking over the library and as it was then, and then setting up Geoff Graham Burgess's chairmanship all those years, you know, it just goes back. And of course, it ran out of puff and some of these committees do that. And of course, Lindisfarne Community Activity Centre, and now that's been handled and managed by council, which is which is the right way to go. Riston Vale Hall, Guy, anyway, it brings back memories because I've been associated with those committees back in the 80s. Now, the Gilmour Bay Community Centre, okay, we want to keep that, but I do raise the question about whether that building is fit for purpose. I've been there and I've been at children's birthday parties and I've helped tidy up afterwards and really, it's the old 1952 musk hats. And I think those particular buildings really are not, in my view, appropriate. But nevertheless, we've been talking about this for a number of years and we still haven't really got to come to grips with that as to whether or not it ought to be it ought to be taken on and renovated. And there's no plans, as I understand it, Mr General Manager, CFO, CEO, as to when that's going to happen. The next point that I have concerns about is the Clarence City Band. Going right back to the days when Michael Redet and myself and Robin Palford spearheaded establishment of the Clarence City Band. But what this is doing is basically be disbanded as a committee and and that at the discretion of the CEO, provide the band sufficient time to enable transition to appropriate structure independent of council. Now, I really have strong reservations about that because once it becomes independent of council, we are going to obviously assist them and make monies available to them through the budget. And they have in in a token format, if I believe is appropriate, will continue to provide a performance for the city of Clarence. But that may stop and we may find ourselves in a situation where that may not happen. And I'm opposed to that basically becoming an independent and losing its support.
Anyone else wish to make contribution? Councillor Walker, thank you, and then councillor Mulder.
Certainly. So I've been calling for a review of committees since probably the first three months coming on to council. As the saying goes, be careful what you wish for. Now, I I I think that the work that has been done has been in depth. I think it's been robust. I think it has been expansive in its consultation. The outcome, I consider adverse. You know, we talk about Sir Humphrey. Well, I think almost the verb Humphried applies to me in in what's been done with this process. I was expecting that there was lots of synergy to actually pare down some committees. But what we're ending up with is a whole lot less committees, but the sticker on the front changes and they're now working groups and filtration mechanisms up above. And and the, you know, it's it's not without some merit that you're you're trying to make sure that the siloing reduces, but more bureaucracy. This is more bureaucracy. And I don't think it makes for a more nimble or effective operating system. So I can't support it on that basis. And that's, as I said, that's not to say that the the level of work being done wasn't wasn't done to a high level. I don't, I don't, I'm not, I'm not casting suspicions on that. I think it was a high caliber thing, but it was it was the wrong focus and we've ended up with the wrong outcome, and I think that this will just slow us down. And I think also, you've got to give a bit more leeway for excellence. Now, no committee's been doing a bad job. I think they've all been doing a good job. But when it comes to excellence, there's one that is actually internationally renowned, internationally renowned, and that is getting downgraded to a workforce, a working group. And its its initiatives will get filtered through a committee before it comes to council instead of the old process where there wasn't that that middle bureaucracy in between. And so I, you know, I I think CPAC, as I said, something that has been a a a committee that has been asked to speak internationally, something that I don't think any other Tasmanian council has in that space or or in their structures. I think that that deserves a carve out. It's not getting one. So as I said, be careful what you wish for. This is is the end result and I can't support it.
Just a point of clarification, Jim Hacker or Sir Humphrey Appleby?
Being Humphrey, there's, I'm very much feeling like Jim.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, councillor Walker. Councillor Mulder, please.
I think we just need to get our heads in perspective about these are all advisory committees. They do not have power to make decisions or commit rate payers' funds. They are advisory committees and as such, they perform a valuable means of us consulting, not necessarily, well, with consulting with people with skin in the game or an interest in this particular matter, specific stakeholders, before we go out to the wider community consultation. Because if we don't have this focus group, if you like, of people to give us the ideas and the suggestions that we might consider worth taking forward, then we're not consulting on anything but a range of hairy fairy options in which people don't know really what they're being asked about. So they perform that function as an advisory group that helps focus the issues that that they're particularly interested in. But on the other hand, you know, although I'm not a great one for more and more more committees, but there's a glaring absence, and I and I do apologise because I've never raised this before, but it dawned on me as we was going through all those things, I reckon there's one missing, there's really one missing, and that's a council rep, probably not voting rep, on our neighbourhood houses. They are wonderful areas, they are as local, as local, as local as you can get, and yet we are bystanders to the services that these people provide, often on our behalf. So, you know, I I think that that would be an avenue, but of course, it's a bit late to be starting talking about amendments to that particular plan, but it's a bit of food for thought and I would be interested to see. I know many of us are involved in things like the halls with which are associated with the neighbourhood houses, but not the neighbourhood house committees themselves. And I've had the privilege of sitting on observers of some of those committee meetings and and a not voting one. And I think that, you know, that a council perspective on some of those would be a really good thing to do on two way street. One, we would know some of the things they're up to, and two, we would be in a position to support or suggest or guide some of their activities. As 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 local government is as local as you can get, neighbourhood houses as local as you can get.
Councillor Mulder? There being no other colleagues wishing to speak, I'll call on councillor Ritchie. Write a reply, Deputy Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. And I thank colleagues for their contributions and what I anticipate is general general groundswell of support, taking into account a couple of questions in response to councillor James. I also, when the proposal was brought to workshop, asked questions around the Clarence City Band, having visited them more recently and was pleased to be told that, in fact, they're not opposed to the idea that's being put before them. Obviously, that's was critical for me in my decision making to be prepared to accept this proposal, that the affected entities are actually embracing of the proposals. So I respond in that in that sense. In relation to the Gilmour Bay Community Centre, we've also discussed that at workshop level and it's reiterated again here. Yes, it's acknowledged that the building is considered nearing end of life and it's anticipated that this facility and the site generally will be considered as part of the Gilmour Bay Master Plan. So obviously, there'll be future considerations in relation to that site, which I'm sure will take into account the very valid points that you've that you've raised in respect of those. I thank councillor Mulder for his contributions. Importantly, it's, I've noted that people, the general sense has been that we've wanted to see change. So, you know, and and sometimes you've got to make a start on that and tweak it as you go through. Nothing's ever completely perfect when you first start out usually. Sometimes you tweak things and change things as they go through. I'm very optimistic that these committees will work well, but obviously, if we don't actually implement a new structure, then we're not going if we don't actually, uh, in- implement a new structure, then we're not going to give ourselves that opportunity. Um, the idea, as I think I said in my, uh, opening statement, that this wasn't about necessarily doing less work, uh, the financial implications, uh, in the officer's report are deemed to be minimal. So, um, why wouldn't we look at trying to, uh, potentially expand, um, the sorts of things that we're drawing on through the committee structure? So, um, all of that being said, um, I hope that, um, Council Walker, um, is, uh, wrong and that we will actually see, uh, very positive outcomes flow, uh, flow to the council from the, uh, new committee structure, should it be supported. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'll put the motion, which is the recommendation, uh, all those in favour? Those against? Thank you, so carried. Uh, now moving on to, I don't know, there are no motions on notice, um, over to item ten, councillors' question time. Uh, ten point one, I note, there's a question, uh, from Council Hume, and I'll read that. Um, it's regarding the Mornington Roundabout upgrade. And, uh, Council Hume asks, uh, on notice, has council received any advice from the Tasmanian Government about the progress of the Mornington Roundabout upgrade? CEO or Mr. Graham, um, for an answer, please.
Is there any answer out, sorry?
There's a copy here if you'd like to, okay. Thank you, Mr. Graham.
Through, Mr. Mayor. Um, the department commenced, um, so we received advice from the Department of State Growth. The department commenced examining options for improving safety and congestion issues at the Mornington Roundabout and the highway interchange in mid twenty twenty-one. The work has included gathering community feedback in October twenty twenty-one, identifying issues with the existing intersection, extensive traffic modelling validated by a detailed traffic survey and origin destination study to analyse upgrade options for the intersection, and looking at whether introducing additional accesses to the Tasman Highway Corridor would assist in relieving roundabout congestion. The traffic environment at the site is highly complex with substantial implications for the surrounding road network, including the Tasman Highway, South Arm Highway, uh, Mornington Road, as well as adjacent homes and businesses. Minimising the disruption of future construction works will also present a major challenge given the highly constrained area around the roundabout and nearby Tasman Highway, South Arm Highway interchange. There is an Australian government commitment of thirty million dollars to upgrade the roundabout. The department has recommended a package of upgrade options to the government. In discussions of the options with state and federal ministers, the department, department was requested to conduct further investigation and cost estimates. This work is expected to be completed in May twenty twenty-three and the results will then be discussed with the state and federal ministers. The council will be briefed once there is agreement on the upgrades that should be delivered with the available funding.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Um, moving now on to item ten point three, answers to questions without notice from the previous council meeting, and they're as listed, uh, in the agenda. Moving now on to, uh, item ten point four, questions without notice. Are there any questions from the floor? We'll start this evening with, um, the Deputy Mayor, Council Ritchie.
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
No, thank you. Council Mulder.
There I have two, and I, um, I refer to numerous, uh, reports that, um, residents have been informed that potholes in various areas cannot be fixed until the water table reduces due to the absence of either fall or, or adequate subsurface drainage of the streets. Can you assure the community that the reconstruction of Pass Road will not suffer from our inability to manage our stormwater responsibilities?
Thank you, Council Mulder. Uh, Mr. Graham.
Uh, well, in, in relation to Pass Road, this, um, question is related to our capital works programme and will be coming to council on forthcoming workshops involving land acquisition and capital funding. So, um, I don't believe it's necessarily, um, at risk of proceeding in relation to the actual stormwater issues e- on, on that road corridor.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Second question, Council Mulder.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, speaking of Pass Road, yet another large pothole has appeared, uh, and some two weeks ago and has, uh, yet to be repaired. Since most of these potholes on this road are caused by heavy vehicles travelling on a sponge, why hasn't the load limit been reduced?
Mr. Graham.
Uh, through, Mr. Mayor, I'll take that one on notice to advise council.
All right, thank you. Council Hunter? Council Hume?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I have two questions. Uh, so the first one relates to, um, I understand that there are areas of the city where, uh, maintenance work is required on council land that, that causes the state government land. So, for example, if you've got a highway with a, with a road reserve, a council maintains an area, um, beyond that, let's say a, a walking track or, um, I was wondering if there's any kind of programme or arrangement where, uh, council and the state government pulls their resources to ensure that maintenance work such as, um, mowing road verges in those areas gets done together, um, you know, to, to produce economies of scale, I guess, rather than having, you know, one party sort of mow up to the boundary of the other and then having that separately maintained. I hope that makes sense.
It does, thank you, Council Hume. Uh, Mr. Graham?
Uh, through, Mr. Mayor. I, I don't believe we have any, um, sort of, um, joined, um, partnership at the moment in terms of undertaking this. It's been governed by the Roads and Jetties Act and different staffs and interpretations and years of agreements in terms of which areas are covered. This Department of State Growth is reviewing all its road and highways legislations at the moment, and, um, I feel it's forthcoming in, in the time period in terms of the state government will, um, I mean, we've made a submission, um, as all, a lot of the councils have, um, attended a forums in, in February to put their points of view on the sort of, um, uh, disparities in the, um, various highways legislation. But I imagine further information will be provided by the Department of State Growth after they've, um, reviewed all the legislation.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Castle Hume, your second question.
Thank you, Mr. Graham, for his answer. Um, the second one is, uh, arose from, uh, something that occurred during this meeting and, uh, it, it's something that I suggest you may like to, to take on notice and have a closer look at. Um, the, the practice when I was previously on council, when an amendment was moved, was to, uh, if it wasn't acceptable to the mover and incorporated into the motion, therefore incorporated the motion, a second would be sought, the motion, the amendment would be fully debated and then if carried, incorporated into the substantive motion. Now, my understanding is that there haven't been any recent changes to the main procedures. So, I was wondering whether that, that, that could be looked at, um, as to whether, uh, there's a, well, has the procedures changed or, or is there, has there been a different interpretation of procedures? And maybe some clarification on what the actual procedure is.
Council Hume, um, be sure, I will, uh, investigate this fully, uh, over the coming days and I will come back to you and other col- all colleagues, uh, with a detailed answer. Uh, I'll review the tape from tonight's meeting as well. Uh, I'll take advice, uh, but, uh, please know that, uh, I made a, a decision that I believe to be in the best interest of this council and would be the correct call from the Chair. If I erred, uh, I, I will apologise, but as I say, I will review and I'll come back to, um, yeah, in, in coming days.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Council James?
Uh, yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My first question is in relation to Pipe Clay Esplanade. Uh, in the previous council, um, we had before us a consultant's report advising on a number of ma- ways in which work could be done on Esplay, on the gravel section of Pipe Clay Esplanade, as far as a rebuild, remedial action, and also some costings. There were four, uh, criteria in relation to that. So, my question is, uh, through you to Mr. Graham. Uh, Mr. Graham, uh, where are we with that? And, um, is it proposed to come to council, uh, for further discussions on this and for council to consider one of the four options that was suggested by that consultant at that time?
Thank you, Council James. Uh, Mr. Graham?
Uh, through, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the, um, the future decision or options on the road will be considered by council through the local, um, coastal management plans. We're still waiting for water research laboratory providers with a draft copy. Um, I'll inquire with them so I can inform council what's the likely timing of us receiving that report and then coming to a forthcoming council workshop.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Council James?
Uh, Mr. Graham, a second question is, uh, I went for my little walk today down on Bell Reef Beach and I noticed that the, the area that's been fenced off adjacent to the, um, Play Park equipment, uh, is still inundated and it's very boggy and so on, and it's been like that for a number of months. Would Mr. Graham be able to advise council as to whether or not another, uh, retention pit is to be per, is, is to be actually installed in that lower section adjacent to the playground, um, fence? Or as to whether there is going to be some other work done to alleviate that inundation problem that's been ongoing for many months now?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Graham.
Uh, through, Mr. Mayor, I'll take that one on notice and advise council.
Thank you. Council Walker?
Yeah, just a quick one, and I know that, uh, is being addressed, I think, in the upcoming budget, which is the issue of, uh, the Gilmour Bay Park, which is, is a popular little park in our, um, municipality, doesn't currently have a drinking fountain. We are making provision for a drinking fountain, I think, in the upcoming budget, which is great. Uh, I, I'm just asking and putting a request through that this might be, uh, an opportunity to look at what is some of the best practice around drinking fountains that, um, are, um, really good for, uh, dog, dog walkers as well. I know that we have a form of that at Anzac Park, but it, it's not without some, some issues, so I'm rhetorically wondering if we, if it is possible that we, um, we look at doing, uh, you know, best practice in this, uh, starting with Gilmour Bay and if it works, rolling it out.
Thank you, Council Graham. Note that Mr. Graham and the CEO were busily, um, describing. Um, Mr. Graham, do you wish to add anything at this stage?
Uh, no, I'll take that one on notice.
Thank you. Council Goine.
Um, I have two questions, uh, just to clarify, I'm only allowed to?
That's right.
I thought so. Um, I just wanted to see if, um, the council has received any correspondence from the Tasmanian Government about the Lorded Al Primary School intersection and any possible works will be happening there. It's been a constant issue that's being flagged with me as a death waiting to happen. So, and have, having witnessed, um, many near misses there myself, um, I just was wondering if we had any updates on if and when something is going to occur at that intersection.
Thank you, Mr. Graham.
Um, my, uh, through, Mr. Mayor, my understanding is that's part of the South Arm or Rockabye Road, um, upgrade. They're looking at the section from Pass Road, um, through to, um, Oak Downs Drive, and they're also looking at improving the intersection of, um, the highway and Acton Road. Um, the, I think they're going to be looking at doing some community consultation in the forthcoming months, but I, we don't believe that there's, um, work expected to commence until probably twenty-five, twenty-six. Financially, there's considerable design work to be undertaken.
Thank you. Council Goine?
Uh, and my second question, uh, relates around the Tengara Trail Network. I received some more correspondence this week from another horse rider that was involved in an incident, uh, with a cyclist, um, and this is one of many. Um, I'm currently collating some, um, incident reports in regards to that to bring to council before we have a serious, very serious injury. Um, I'm just wondering when that was decided that the Tengara Trail Network would be a, become a multi-user trail network and what education council put forward for the community? Um, and if any extra education is planned, um, for that particular area? Um, particularly also, um, any possible regulations we have around users wearing earbuds? Seems to be a huge problem, including people running into my own seven hundred kilo horse because they didn't see it. Um, I'll, I'll notice a seven hundred kilo black horse too, so he doesn't blend in. Um, and if there's any way that council can manage users not necessarily being aware of their surroundings because of distractions, so.
Thank you, Council Goine. Mr. Graham?
I'll take that one on notice.
Thank you.
Hear the question.
Council Darko? Council Warren? Thank you. Council Chong? All right. Um, well, um, colleagues, uh, thank you. Um, I'll now call for a motion to move into closed meeting, please, a mover. Thank you, Council Chong, seconded, Council Goine. Uh, I'll put the motion. All those in favour? Thank you, so moved. So, thank you to those members of the public who have attended in person, um, via, um, the live stream. Um, uh, we look forward to seeing you in, uh, three weeks' time. Thank you, please enter live stream. All right, thanks, Andrew.